Public school board of directors to order. Mr. Henson.
I had an agenda item I'd like to add. I'd like to have a discussion about maybe a short term, a short contract to help review bids for the playgrounds.
I'm going to add that to the agenda at after number five so that we can have the parents to bid off to stay.
I've also added an item to the consent agenda for a new food service district.
The first item on the agenda is public comment and there are some folks here. If you're here for item five, you don't need to be part of public comment now, but if you, if anyone has public comment on something else?
Nothing.
No? Okay. All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
They're figuring out whether they really are number five or not.
You are number five? Okay. Okay. A motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I should have said that on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes from May 16th, approval of new teacher contracts, approval and signing of bond documents, approval of MHS roof bid, approval of tax anticipation notes, approval of the AFSMI side letter agreement, and adoption of the tobacco prohibition, education records, student alcohol and drugs, and limited English proficiency students policies. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for all the explanations of that material, Brian, and the memo, and I understand we all need to sign the things?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Actually, we're down to just two more that need to sign, and so if Lisa and Ryan take care of that, I will just grab that thing.
Fantastic.
Jim, Tina, and Amay are ready.
Great. And the consent agenda also included the teaching positions and the district director, as Brian indicated at the beginning. The next action item is the warrant process and approval process, number four.
Grant, do you want to come and speak about that? Since you're doing your thing so long, I'm sorry, because you're over there.
Sure. So I think Superintendent Wicca gave some brief description of what this is related to. In the law book, 16 VSA 563, under powers of the board, it basically, in a nutshell, says, "The board is responsible to approve the bills that we pay, and who we're paying them to, and how much we're having to pay," and then provides that approval to the treasurer who is then responsible to make sure the bills get paid. And so we just wanted to have a documented process in place where we can tell our auditors, this is what we do, this is how we handle it. So as outlined in Superintendent Wicca's memo, we plan to continue to have warrants run every other week. We are asking that you approve or authorize the chair or vice chair to sign the warrants on behalf of the board. We will keep track of every warrant that gets approved, so for example, during the summer, if you're not meeting, we will keep track of the warrants that the chair or vice chair have signed, and we will make sure that those get on your next board meeting. And then we will have documentation that shows the board approved the warrants, we will have somebody's signature on those warrants, and we will use those warrants to provide to your district treasurer, and then she can make sure the bills get paid, meaning her signature will be on the checks that go out. So it was, it's just kind of a simple housekeeping thing so that I can document that you have agreed to this process. So I believe there was a suggested motion to approve the warrant process as outlined and to authorize the chair or vice chair to sign warrants on behalf of the board. And I'll be glad to address any. It's really just documenting what both prior districts probably have already done, but just something that I can show that we did actually talk about it and have the process and will follow it.
Any questions for Grant or the superintendent?
That's the way we've been doing it for everybody who hasn't been doing it.
And we may not, we may have missed a couple of warrants that got signed, you know, off cycle, whenever meetings got canceled, and that's something we want to make sure that we clean up. And if the auditors come in, we want to be able to show, here's where this warrant was approved, here's where this one was, and be able to have all of them in maybe a numbered sequence that we can make sure so it's very clear.
So we can't have had that many warrants from this point in the new district, can't we?
You have had none.
We don't have had one yet.
The district's not operating.
So very soon we will start having them, and it'll be during the summer when you're not meeting on a regular basis, so it's something I needed to get documented before that happens.
I wouldn't say that too quickly, that we're not meeting on a regular basis this summer.
Yeah.
I, we probably are. There's a suggested motion in the memo. Can someone propose it? It's on page two.
I will. I move that we approve the warrant process as outlined and authorize the board chair or vice chair to sign warrants on behalf of the board.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you, Grant.
The next item on the agenda, number five, is a parent request which you have in your packet from, and please let me know if I'm saying this correctly, Duane and Rachel Natvig. And Duane and Rachel Natvig are here, and you are welcome to come up and speak with us if you'd like to. We have, we have your request, and we've read it. If you, we're happy to hear from you if that, if you'd like to speak to us about it. You can either sit or stand at the microphone, as long as you're at one of the microphones, it's fine.
Well, I think the board's decision has to be based on what's best for our son, and that really boils down to continuity because he's already a seventh grader and would be forced to change to a different school between seventh and eighth grade. And as, I believe his name is Mr. Gale pointed out to your, to previous meetings, I think he gave us here, smooth transition's always been the goal of mergers, and grandfathering has been the way that has happened. And our son was already in a different school, you know, as mentioned in the minutes, before students wouldn't learn to start at another school, but he did, he started at the beginning of sixth grade, and he was actually enrolled in seventh grade on March 27, 2017, which is the defining time mentioned in Article 40 of the merger. And we ask that you see that as a literal interpretation. It's kind of like fundamentalism, I suppose, but the intent might have been to say attending, but it didn't say attending, said he was indeed enrolled well in advance of that deadline, or you to allow him to continue at school. It's been very good for him, and that's the main thing for us.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add maybe with a little bit more clarification that I, I think our request is based on looking at the agreement as it was accepted in the merger, and the wording does say that your child be enrolled by the certain deadline. So I think it's, it's that wording of enrolled where we're having possibly the debate centering on that. He was attending the sixth grade, but he was enrolled to be in the seventh grade by that date. So the letter of the agreement, he meets the letter of the agreement. He was in fact enrolled to be in the seventh grade prior to your deadline. He was not attending seventh grade, but he was in fact enrolled in a, in a different school district.
Thank you for coming tonight and for your comments. We're going to open it up now for the board to discuss your request.
And we're able to-
You're welcome to sit down. You can stay there at the table, it's fine. Yes?
I'd like to begin by saying that the, in reference to what the first statement was, the merger committee truly understood the difficulty of children going from one school to another at any point, and it was a rough conversation, but we had to make a decision about when that would be. So we appreciate that, but we did make a decision, I believe.
I understand, so I understand that they're asking for us, for the district, and therefore the taxpayers to be paying for tuition to Waldorf for not one year, but all remaining years of the student's career?
Six years.
To be grandfathered in, per the letter of the agreement.
I mean, it really was, as you had mentioned, when the board went through, excuse me, the study committee went through this discussion, we spent a lot of time and a lot of meetings talking about what the cutoff point would be, and it really felt like the most tenable to both existing districts was that cutoff period for students who were going to be in seventh grade already. So when those students graduated sixth grade last year, which would have included your son, I know he wasn't in the village school, but would have graduated sixth grade last year, it's those students were essentially encouraged by the way that the articles were drafted to move to Main Street Middle School this year so that it wouldn't be a forced transition that's coming here. So we felt like between all the study committee members that the best route was moving those kids at that point in time because there was no technical forcing uprooting somebody from an existing situation. So I think the hope had been by the study committees to have that in situations like yours with students who were going to be entering eighth grade next year, that they would have already been in Main Street Middle School so that there wasn't this potential disruption. So that was a lot of the intent of both existing districts and the study committees, to be able to come up with a solution or a situation that would be tenable to most people. We really do, and it's tough talking about an individual student, we really do have the best interests of all students in our district, including your sons, at heart in our discussions and decisions. I guess a lot of them are talking about one specific kid, but.
And I don't believe that we're asking you to revisit the discussion because I, obviously, you know, we did read the minutes of the notes, and we understand that you have, you know, looked at this and you've considered what the cutoff needed to be. Again, I think what we're asking you to do is, as per the agreement, when it says that your child needs to be enrolled by this date, and then in fact, we do have documentation that our son was enrolled for the seventh grade by the date that's listed. So we are following the letter of the agreement. So we're not asking you to make a different decision, we're asking you to honor the agreement that you made, that that is written down.
I think you're trying to force the creation of a loophole that was never intended to exist and isn't consistent with the intent of the committee.
I think the fact that there's, yes, I know some people have more legal expertise than I do, but I feel like the fact that we're talking about private school instead of a public school changes the situation a little bit. So in my mind, you know, as every student gets near the end of their current grade level in a public school, it's expected that they would be continuing on to the higher grade level the following year. You know, the families don't sign a contract in, you know, May that my fourth grader is going to be a fifth grader next year. It's kind of assumed.
They just show up.
Right. So it's a little bit different, I think, in this case, since it's a private school versus a public school, and the fact that, you know, those families in a private, excuse me, a public school situation don't sign a formal contract, yes, my kid is committing to grade X next year. I could be maybe wrong in that argument, but I feel like-
I'm confident that the committee meant enrolled being in that grade.
So, and as, as the board knows, we've had, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
We've, we have had two other requests now for tuition waivers, one basically the same type of request, and the other for someone who wanted to attend the Northfield schools, and the board has denied those requests just in recent weeks. Peter, go ahead.
This isn't specific to this case, it's more of a general thing. I have a lot of problems with using public dollars to send kids to private schools. I really do. I think, I think it's, I think it creates a big problem for us, not the least of which is that the private school in question will set the rate for their student, and we pay that no matter what that rate is. So if we could just start, if our per pupil costs are less, that means we're using taxpayer dollars to subs, to further subsidize private schools who have less, less regulations, less things they have to teach, less special needs kids regulations. I mean, it's a big problem. It's a big drain on, on the state's education fund of public dollars is going to private schools. And, and if you're talking about doing this for seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, six years, you know, that's a serious ask of taxpayers in this district. You know, no, I'm not saying private schools are bad. If people want to send their kid to a private school, that's their right, but to ask the rest of the taxpayers to pay for it, potentially depriving the rest of the district of funds, of additional funds, is a big problem for me, and one we should take very seriously if we were to consider this.
In all of these multi-year cases of tuition requests, I just feel like it's too much to take that level of resources from the district.
It's a very, oh, go ahead.
I just would say, I hear your argument, Peter. I don't, I don't think it matters whether it goes to a public school somewhere else or a private school. Either way, it's, it's still, you know, those, that money leaving the district.
I mean, accepting-
As far as-
It is different because when we, there's less, there's, okay, yeah, I hear what you're saying.
I would say, I would say whether, whether it might be different, it's probably not a basis on which we can make a decision. The impact on our district is the same regardless.
I think as we make this decision, it's important to frame it not in terms of the best interest of one child, but in terms, in the interest of the best interest of all the children in our district and the best interests of the owners of our district, who are the, who are the people who live in these towns and who contribute both civically in terms of volunteerism, but also in terms of financially, in terms of taxes. It's a balancing act that the board is charged with making. We take that role very seriously, and we are not able to, to favor one person over another in that process. I also think that the, one of the problems with these is that they're such expensive asks. I think that we're talking about, every time we consider this, we're talking about about $100,000 for one person, and it's not something we can do, you know, like, like, say, waves and books or something like that. So it's a very expensive request. The other thing is, I think it was, it's very clear from, from the board deliberation, or from the committee deliberations, that consider this merger, that what the intent was, and that it was very clear what we were trying to achieve, and it was that it, that it was to not, to give, as you say, force those, force that conversation within the family early so that they would have an opportunity to make a decision to not disrupt their child any more than necessary. And some, some parents did not exercise that option, and some may have, I don't even know how many did. And so I think that we did do a really deliberative job on this, trying to find that balance, and then we took this document to the voters of both districts, asking them whether they agreed with this. And they overwhelmingly in both towns said they agreed with this frankly compromise between the towns about how this was going to operate. And so if you look at it from that perspective, high stakes, many constituents that, has an interest in this, a good deliberative process, ratification by the taxpayers and the, or the voters, I think we have pretty solid grounds to say that we have, we have really taken the best interest of not just this child, but everyone when we, when we do this, and that we are not, and that we're being very consistent in what we're doing.
Great.
Can I have a clarified question of you, Steve?
Yeah.
Or I guess the whole board. Do, do you think the public, when they were voting, thought, do you think people were informed as far as that it would be mean enrolled in seventh grade means currently in seventh grade? Was that something that-
I think there was a lot of conversation-
I, there was-
It was a lot of conversation in Roxbury about that, and I think people were clear, and people who had concerns came at that time to voice it when we were having the discussion. So I think it was clear.
And I, I would say people in Montpelier were concerned about it, too, because the issue of Montpelier voters paying for the tuition-
Right.
-was an issue, and there were a lot of conversations clarifying why some students were grandfathered, and who would be grandfathered, and when that would stop-
We had all those coded stepwise charts.
We did. Did you want to add something?
Well, I just wanted to make a small correction to something Peter said, and that is, the grandfathering tuition payment from, by public districts is not complete to independent schools. It is true for other public schools that the sending district would pay full tuition, but it isn't true at all for independent schools. There's a significant difference. It's subsidization, for sure. And I also wanted to say, Steve sort of implied that people who send their children to independent schools haven't supported their committee. Well, this isn't true at all. I mean, I've been paying taxes and supporting Roxbury School for 35-plus years, and I don't know, it just seems like we're, we're asking you to consider the disruption of an educational path that denial would bring to one student? Yes. And yes, he wasn't in the Roxbury School system when discussions possibly were made clear to other sixth grade families that he better transition quick. But like we said, he, he was enrolled. If you wanted to say attending, you should have said attending. That's just pretty simple English, and the meaning of enrollment is pretty simple, too, from Webster's, anyway, and just want you to think about his welfare and not just about dollars.
And I, and I would ask for clarification. You said it's $100,000 per student, and I'm, I'm not sure where that number comes from.
Is it 15,000 or 16,000 per student per year?
16.
16 times in a row.
Not to an independent school.
Not to an independent school. His tuition subsidy last year, or this, this current year was like 11,000.
It's lower for 11,000.
So it's a little bit different. So the way, Lori, correct me if I get this incorrect, but, so the state has a dollar amount per education for the students. If a student in the Roxbury District, when the Roxbury District was operating as a choice district, would pay that amount up to the state dollar amount.
State average.
Right. And then anything above that, the parents or the families will be responsible for paying.
For independent schools, not for the private, as you mentioned.
Right, independent private schools.
But isn't it-
Despite, regardless of what the district that's, that's tuition, that's paying the tuition, would have charged for its own tuition, you're saying that it's the state average?
Yes.
But isn't that a decision-
Just like 11 or something?
Is it the yield that they-
Isn't that a decision, Lori, by district? Because when I was principal of Washington, it was a decision Washington made how much they would pay to a school. It was the average.
It was the Roxbury's to pay the state average.
Right, so the district makes the decision.
And isn't that figure higher at the high school level than at the elementary level?
Yes, for sure.
I, I do just want to say that we, and I think I probably speak for the board on this, that these have been very difficult conversations for all of us every time one of them comes to us, and I suspect this is not the last one, because we understand that when parents like you come, you have the best interest of your child at heart, absolutely, and we have to balance that with our responsibility as fiduciaries for the district and, and our responsibility for all the students in the district. And it, it's not easy, and, and we understand that it's not easy for you, too. Is there further discussion? Or is there a proposal for a resolution?
Do we have a motion?
There's no motion. These are difficult to frame the motions.
So I just ask for a moment of clarification. You want us to accept the spirit of your intention, and the legality of honoring the letter of the intention is not something that you feel compelled to honor.
So now I'll switch to speaking for myself. I feel comfortable that, that, that the, both the spirit and the letter of the agreement were addressed to students that were attending seventh grade. So I, that's, that's where I land on this. I don't think we're dishonoring either the way the agreement was written or what was intended, but I, and I do think it's very, very clear what was intended by, by the committee and what was communicated to the voters about how this would work. And there's also just, there are significant fairness concerns, given that, you know, there are many families in your situation, and there are some that would prefer to go to other schools. The voters made a choice that, that the Montpelier Roxbury District is not a choice district. It's a, it's a district where students attend the public schools.
We received a request, so-
Right. In the past, we've addressed these by, with a motion to direct the superintendent to respond. That's my recollection of how we've done it on the others. Is that, okay? Is that, am I right? Ryan's the parliamentarian.
It's not up for, let's see. It's listed as a discussion, it's not listed as an action item, so, right, you shouldn't need to take it, but it would be a recommendation, it would be fine.
I'm sorry.
Don't we have to act on it?
I, we, I thought that we had voted to deny the request in the other instance, but I'd have to look back at the minutes.
I thought we had to.
I made a motion to deny the request for the writers.
And I, and all of this, I wrote the letter to the Sulegneys explaining the board's decision and briefly summarizing the board's deliberation.
And the decision had been made by the board at that point. You're kind of sending it back to you for a decision.
No.
Okay. Apologize if I misspoke. It's good. Is there a motion on the table now? No? Does anyone want to make one?
Brian just made one.
That's what I thought, but he said no.
So I'll make a motion then to deny the request presented by the Natvig family.
And I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for coming in tonight. We're moving on to policy discussions, and we have four policies for first reading. Title I, comparability, animal dissection, which I'm very much looking forward to the discussion. Title I, parental involvement compacts, and the board member conflict of interest. Since it's the first reading, my, my proposal is that we go through them one by one and see if people want to raise questions, issues, things that we can talk about or get more information on in the second reading. So starting with Title I, comparability. And Tina has a pen out, so I strongly suspect-
What's up with tobacco through-
We adopted those on the consent agenda. I'm fast, I'm fast.
Great. Okay, comparability. Here we go.
Here we go.
So I'm ready with this one because I really don't understand it. It appears, and I'm really sporing the idea of required at the top. It appears to me that this policy counters the intent of the Title I law. So for example, I think Montpelier's done school-wide use of whatever little Title I they've gotten. I'll readily say if you targeted and ranked everything we got would go to Roxbury. That's just how targeting would go. But the point is, the point of Title I money is to give extra money to schools that are, do not have as much, that have a low, a higher population of low socioeconomic students. And it appears that this policy undermines that, or counters it. It's not, it's surplanting is what I guess I'd say. So I don't understand it. So I'm up for explanation.
Because it's saying, it, can I, can we go back to before you asked your question one second and just make sure that I understand? So if for- So if, for example, Union Elementary School has enough low-income children to receive a Title I grant, then we have to provide, and that allows us to, say, have a free before-school program for those students. Then we also have to provide a free before-school program at all three other facilities? Is that what this policy is saying?
I'm not sure that it's that specific. It's saying if Title I gave five hundred dollars to Union School, then we, as a local, would have to give five hundred dollars to each of the other schools to make it fair. And the whole reason they gave five hundred dollars to Union School...
Is because of the pre-existing unfairness.
Right. So you're undoing that. The way this policy reads to me, so I was, I kept reading it, thinking I don't understand it.
Do Title I funds, in theory, make up for a lack of funding in a particular school because of the lower socioeconomics of that town?
It's not actually a lack of funding. It's the idea that a population of more low socioeconomic kids might need more things.
More support.
More support. And that was the intent of the original Title I law.
Does it make sense to take a pause and ask the superintendent to give us some more...
It's a required policy.
It is a required, I mean, what I would say to Tina's point, our school-wide, we are doing school-wide now. And Mike is working with Michaela, the two curriculum directors, to ensure that our continuous improvement plan does include Roxbury. And now that we have a fourth school, we do have to do targeting and ranking going forward. So perhaps, perhaps what we should do is pause on this one. Let me go back with Mike and Michaela and Lori and reevaluate. Because previously, MPs with only three schools did not have to do targeting and ranking. And now that we have four, we do. And we set these policies up before we were informed through the CIP that we were doing targeting and ranking, so...
Well, can you explain that it says it's required? It implies to me that it's required to do it, and it really is.
And that's going to give me a chance to follow up on that one as well. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks. Also a required policy, the animal dissection policy. So the gist of this is that students can't be required to dissect.
That's really all it is.
And that we should provide an alternative method for them to learn whatever was supposed to be learned by the dissection.
Correct.
Great policy.
All right. Can I ask for the shout to Will James on this policy? Thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
This is just about animal dissection. Not to embarrass one of my children in front of her, one of her peers, but she had to leave biology because they were taking their own blood in class. I don't remember what.
I'm not AP bio.
Okay.
That's cool.
So they, and they had an AP bio lab in which the kids took their own blood, and she had to leave. And the teacher was great, but a different teacher might not have been. I don't know if we have a way to fit that into the animal dissection policy. Animal dissection or human determination.
I think we have animal dissection because the legislature requires us to have a policy that lets students out of dissecting animals. Like, I don't think there's been a broader discussion of what should we, should we not?
Can we also let them out of other gross activity?
I don't know.
I don't know that we have a policy about it, but it has always been the custom. For example, if there is a discussion, a sex education discussion, and your child wish, and you wish them not to attend that, you can opt out with, and get that information in another manner, so...
Is that a policy or a procedure?
That's what I was just going to ask Brian. I don't know what that falls under, Brian, but I know there are other instances in which that happens.
I would say it's...
Yeah, I mean, I would say...
I'm not sure I've been asked that, really.
I would... I don't know the answer to that question, whether we have reached out to parents in that way or not, but I would say it would be a procedure. You're certainly welcome to make it a policy, but it isn't currently mandated as a policy.
But this one has to be a policy.
This one does have to be a policy.
I think the key to this is not so much topic as the notification, or the notification of the rights, which comes at the end of the procedures, I believe, is that this is a unique situation in which there's a proactive notification.
And an alternative education method.
Sure. But I think that that would follow, you know, we often see where, I mean, at least at the younger grades, you see that parents will warn families that something's coming up, like a movie or something that they like, you know, if you don't want your child to be subjected to this or whatever, just let us know. And I think what follows from that is, and we'll come up with something else that's equally educationally valuable. And I think what's unique here is that there's a requirement that everybody be notified of the rights. And I think that, you know, like with a blood draw, it's interesting because you might argue that it's in this category, at least tangentially. And so maybe, you know, it would be ideal if the teacher would warn everyone, hey, if you don't want to do this, it's okay, and we'll come up with another way to do it, I don't know. But I think ultimately for families, that's the issue, is I didn't know I had, I didn't know I could say no. And I don't know that I want to extend that to just generally controversial topics, but I think that, you know, I might not even put this in here if I was, if I wasn't in the legislature, if the legislature didn't make us, but it does. So it's about the warning, I think, is the focus on this, is what I'm saying. And it doesn't seem to be harmful to warn people of their rights.
Perhaps we could say this policy is all right, and we will take under consideration blood draws and various human things for another time.
Any further discussion on animal dissection?
It was surprising to me that it was part of the class.
Moving on to Title I, Part A parental involvement policy, which again is a required policy involving our obligations to make sure that parents are involved for parents, parents of students receiving services and programs under Title I. Are there any questions about comments, questions about this? It includes the sample compact as well. That would be part of the policy as adopted.
Yeah, you know, and as, again, as I'm looking through this, it has references to No Child Left Behind, which has been amended to ESSA. So I'm going to suggest we pause on this as well, simply because...
It's out of date.
It's out of date. So I'm going to, we're going to have to go back and look at this one as well.
Fix the type on the first sentence, please.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I was going to say that as an editing thing, there are all those numbers. It didn't make any sense to me.
They're footnotes. It's because the footnotes are not super scripts. That's what they meant, too, but I think that's what's going on. It's a strange format.
There is no six, though. Oh, yes, there is. Oh, I got it. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Board member conflict of interest policy. This was in the packet once, well, actually, I think this has been in the packet a few times. It was...
We never got to it.
It was discussed by the board at one point as part of a much broader discussion. And just for some background, I think there was a point at which the policy committee was thinking of having a code of, of trying to get a code of conduct policy that included the conflict of interest provisions potentially and have a discussion about that, which might yet be a good idea, but that broader policy discussion keeps getting postponed. And this is a required policy under state law, so we began to get concerned that it has to be in place for the district. So this is the standalone standard conflict of interest policy.
I have one question.
Yeah.
On the back, under complaints of conflict of interest, number one. Upon a majority vote of the remaining board members or upon order of the chair, the board will hold an informal hearing. Why would we give the chair the opportunity to, let's say presumably the majority of the board members don't want to have this hearing, but then we let the chair just say unilaterally, well, too bad, I want this to happen? It's not what we're saying?
That is what it says.
So I'm not, just what's the rationale for giving essentially the board chair the unilateral authority to decide if there's a hearing? Why would we just stick with the majority of the board?
I will say that we should be careful, and that's why we're doing this on a first reading. We should be careful because there are required provisions under the law for this. We have to make sure that, before we change anything, that it's not something in the statute. I don't have an answer.
It would just seem like it potentially would open something up if the board chair had potentially an axe to grind against this one person. They could start dragging this thing through. I'm not saying what happened, I'm not saying this Jim's going to do this. I'm really not saying Jim is going to do this.
Oh, Michelle might have.
Well, let me tell you the previous chair, boy. No, but in seriousness, the majority sounds like a reasonable position. If it's not required by law, it seems like the majority would be the way to go.
It may be, it's in the interest of the time.
It could be that, it could also, right, it could also be, and this is, these provisions where the rest of a board brings one board member up on charges kind of thing, and then everybody becomes the judge and jury for that. It gets really squirrely in a fairly, in a highly dysfunctional board, where the majority can be acting unethically. And the chair may say, you know what, we need a hearing here. And you know who the judge and jury is? The people who aren't being accused, according to this policy. Which is also getting a little squirrely, right? So now you've got, so now this is not...
It's not, I think, I would read this, that if a board member is making the complaint, they are also not...
They're also excu, or recued.
It says of the remaining board members. So I think remaining would be the person who's accused and the person bringing it or...
Sure.
So it's just a mess, right? And I think we have to just hope that the, that the odds are low that it would ever become a mess and just...
Okay.
The other thing is, remember, the chair does serve at the leisure of the rest of the board, or of the board. So it could be at any point replaced if the board chair did something that was...
It's true, the majority can ask the chair.
Are you saying we should get rid of Jim?
Since I'm the first chair, I'm definitely not saying it.
My sense is, if it's even close to being required by statute, don't mess with it.
Yeah, I agree.
Even if it isn't, I don't know if it's going to really matter, but...
Okay, fair enough. I see how it now goes both ways, so thank you for that.
I would like to know what an informal hearing looks like.
Yeah, that's what I...
Does anyone know the answer to that?
You don't have to wear a tie.
Well, to me, informal applies, you're not going to make a decision or you're not going to decide, so why would you have it? After, then you go to ABC, you're going to make a decision.
It may mean that it's not a formal, like...
Like a tie.
Administrative Procedures Act hearing. Maybe that's why it says informal, but I don't know.
You could just get rid of the word informal.
We should ask a question, or it may...
I'm happy, I mean, I'll definitely take responsibility for figuring out what in this policy is required by the statute. That on my plate.
It definitely is moving in the right direction.
I mean, I also love the end of it, which is the board member should be formally censured or subjected to such other action as may be allowed by law.
Yes, by law.
Anything allowed by law. It's on the table. If it's not, we might do it.
Pulling out fingernails, is that allowed by law?
It's a strange, strange policy.
In fact, I mean, isn't it circular a little bit, too? Is that what could you possibly do that would be allowed by law?
I don't know. And does it actually, where it says the member should disqualify him or herself from voting, does that actually mean they have to? Or is it just the board saying...
That's an old one. It would be good, it's morally true, you should, yes. But for instance, if they said, we're going to, we're going to remove you from the board, is that allowed by law?
We don't have any authority to do that.
Or you're going to skip, we're not going to let you attend the next meeting? That's not really, that's not allowed by law.
It's not allowed by law.
Like, there's nothing you can do that's allowed by law.
Right, you're an elected official.
Well, there could be criminal prosecution if it was something truly like crazy, but we can't.
We don't do that.
We don't do that. Sorry, yes, Michelle.
Even formally censured, does that just mean, like, we hereby censure you?
Yes, that is what that means.
We've put the word censure on paper in association with your name.
It's under your name tag if you get it.
That's scary stuff.
I guess by law, you could, from then on, list them on the website with censure on this date. That would probably be allowed by law. So there are ways to publicly shame people officially. All right.
All right.
So can we just move to the second?
Okay, there's three for second reading. The first, so the goal here, I think, is to see if we've resolved any questions there so that these could come back for adoption. Student attendance. There was a question that had been raised about this policy, I think by Ryan, that about why, it said legal pupils. And Brian gave us an answer in the memo, which was that some people attend your school who are not legally obligated to attend school.
Correct.
The attendance policy may be different in that situation.
Correct.
Did anyone have any more questions about that?
No, but when I read the first paragraph again, it says legal pupils between the ages of six and sixteen, right? Okay, got that. Then when you go down, it says, further, it says students who are over the age of sixteen are required to attend school continually. So what are we saying? Are we saying that between, when I read the first sentence, I thought, okay, after sixteen, this doesn't apply. But then down below, it says, when you're over sixteen, it applies. Why does it say it twice?
Well, it's a different sentence. Because the, in the criteria for six to sixteen is excused from attendance as provided in state law. And the criteria for over is different. Mentally or physically unable to continue or excused by the superintendent in writing, which I guess could be for any reason, the superintendent being reasonable.
The super can excuse somebody if they're over sixteen, but not if they're under. Is that what it's saying?
I think it's giving the superintendent much more authority to excuse an older student.
Okay.
Not necessarily cabin.
Right.
I know I wasn't here when this was first read, so I'm going to ask about the Shallenville thing on this one, too.
And then another semantics is the, that we use pupils and students in this one. And I believe more current policy is just students across the board. So getting some consistency on that in this policy.
Is that because of the legal pupils thing?
I think that might be. If I can check, well, it says, yeah.
There's also pupils below.
Is pupil used again somewhere besides that sentence?
I mean, it's in the title of the next one, pupil privacy rights.
I know, in the next one.
Is it a proposal that we should change legal pupils to students?
Well, maybe we should clarify if pupils and students mean the same thing.
There's a difference.
And, because I'm looking at pupil privacy rights, and part of, some of this language uses student also, and some of it uses pupil. Which maybe it doesn't really matter, but...
It's interesting, and I don't know if it's up to date, but I do wonder if part of, in the next one, it's driven by the fact that the federal law has people in the name of it.
That's what I'm kind of thinking. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
Sure.
Sometimes, I love consistency. Sometimes you get thrown a wrench because other sources are not consistent.
Well, my thought would be, could we be consistent and not be illegal? So for example, in the pupil privacy rights, could we just use all pupil? Or is there a reason to use students? That's just a question.
Is student is just a better word?
Yeah, I like it.
In terms of common sense.
Makes more sense.
Legal pupils in Title sixteen, but they also talk about students.
Stus.
Right. They do it, they do it, right. I would not, yeah.
Yeah.
On that one, it's the definition of legal pupil.
So we have to use it in that one?
Certainly sounds like we probably should.
It seems as though they're mixing it up just as much as we are.
I have one suggestion.
Yes, on, which one are we on, back on?
Back on student attendance. Where it says legal pupils, you could say students between the ages of six and sixteen who are legal pupils and who are residents of the school district. And make it clear that you're referring to the definition in the statute.
Doesn't that suggest that there might be students between the ages of six and sixteen who are legal pupils?
Yeah, I thought that was the whole reason we were using that.
Oh, that is true?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought the definition of legal pupil was between six and sixteen.
No. The whole reason we're using legal pupils is because there are students who are not, who do not meet the definition of legal pupil, but this applies only to legal pupils.
So you can be between six and sixteen. Ah. In that case, if that's true, I like your edit, and that makes sense.
Legal pupil means an individual who has attained the age of five... Legal pupil means an individual who has attained the age of five years on or before January one, next following the beginning of the next school year. However, a school district may establish and enforce a regulation which requires that students admitted to kindergarten have attained the age of five on or before any date between August 31st and January 1st. So that's the definition of legal pupil, 16 VSA 1073.
But didn't you-
Once you're admitted to kindergarten, you become legal?
Didn't you just say in your column that we have people here who are not legal pupils?
There was, right.
Who would that be?
That's statute.
Oh, I thought-
That are not legally required to attend.
Where are those?
Says we may have, I don't know that we necessarily have them.
That statute contains exceptions for school attendance for students not legally, is that like four-year-olds, or?
I thought it was the people over sixteen.
Wait, can, can, I get help finding where in the memo this is?
Page two, in the middle.
Page two, student attendance.
Oh, yes, okay.
I mean, the definitions that they go through are teen parent education program, non-residential teen parent education program.
Well, we also have-
An individual who is not a legal pupil may be enrolled in a public school in a pre-kindergarten program offered by or through a public school pursuant, under the adoption of, and it references other-
Well, also lots of kindergarteners are five.
Right.
So...
Well, but does that mean if for some reason we took a four-year-old in kindergarten, they wouldn't be a legal student?
Have you made an exception to the?
Yeah.
Lori, you gonna complicate this, or you gonna make this better?
Well, Title 16's always twisted tail. So this legal pupil is, there's a definition that Brian just read of legal pupil, but when it comes to the attendance of children, that's under 1121 in Title 16.
Yeah.
Attendance by children of school age required, a person having control of the child between the ages of six and sixteen years shall cause the child to attend a public school approved or recognized independent school, blah, blah, blah. So that first sentence is combining-
That's right.
-two things.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think that is really what it was intended to do. I almost think you should point that out to the SBA.
What if, what if the, what if the policy said that, you know, referenced the statute and said, "Students who are required to attend school under Section 1121, blah, blah, blah."
Then speaking and using the term child, not student or pupil.
Pupil.
So it's really children between the ages of six and sixteen who are residents of the school district and not resident pupils who enroll in school that are required to attend school.
So the, the other thing I'd like to point out is these are required policies, not necessarily required wording. The SBA gives you a model, but you are not required to word it exactly, it's just, you're just required to put up a policy.
Right. Typically vetted by legal counsel and such, and that's why everybody's-
Right, worried about it, but-
Looks at them as the, as the guiding policy.
But maybe they missed something.
I would use children in both of these, for both legal pupils and students who are over the age of sixteen. I would say children between these ages and children who are over that.
I get hammered all the time with the saying that you shouldn't refer to people in high school as children.
Probably adults.
Essentially, all it means is that anyone who's enrolled in the school needs to follow the minimum number of days, so.
Right.
It doesn't even matter if you're a resident or not, or what age you are unless you're under six, I guess.
The kids, they gotta go to school.
The kids gotta go to school.
Can we just put that in the first sentence?
I think we're not ready to adopt this one, because we're hearing a lot of questions. So Brian, are you able to take this one back under advisement and look at some of these ways to get consistency, figure out the application of 1121?
Under six, you're not, six is a primary age, and so you're required to be in school by the age of six. So you can be a legal pupil at the age of five, and all schools have to offer kindergarten, and so that's when you become a legal pupil.
But I'm thinking-
Not required to attend.
I'm thinking you're not required to go, yeah.
So...
Right.
Those are the details. Details, devil in the details, man.
Okay.
So are we putting a hold both on student attendance and pupil privacy rights?
No, we haven't even discussed pupil privacy rights.
Oh, sorry. Trying to go too fast.
My recollection is that this one is largely required.
Lots of federal-
Lots of federal references on this one, and we like to comply with federal law. I always love these opening statements, that we intend to comply with the provisions of the pupil privacy rights amendment. I operate on the understanding that we like, intend to comply generally with the governing law. If we wanna put it in a policy, that's good.
It's interesting that it's an intent and not a will.
It is, right, it is, right, yeah. Again, this, this requires the development of administrative procedures, and Montpelier District already has these.
Correct.
Roxbury already has them, so then the new district will need the procedures as well. Are there any other questions about this policy? Okay, are folks comfortable with this one being on for adoption next time? Any objection to that? Okay, none heard, this one will be on for adoption next time. Responsible computer internet network use. Ryan, I hear that you had some questions that you wanted to raise about this, so unlikely. Am I, was this the right one?
It was, yeah. Mike and I just spent a good bit of time talking about this, and when we talked about, when this was up at our last meeting, the policy that was presented to us was a good bit different than the SBA policy, and none of us had any chance to get any feedback from Mike's team on why it was different. So we did have, we did spend some time talking about that, so I had some background to fill in. And there was one question about one of the changes that I had that I wanted to raise. So ultimately, the theme of some of the changes that were presented to us, the tech team, let me see, did you guys ever, did everybody see the email that Mike Martin sent out a couple weeks ago? Did that come across to everybody?
I saw it come by.
Right. So he filled in a little bit of the background of where the policy came from. They've spent, they've spent more than a year working on this. Even before the merger had happened, Montpelier's existing policy was pretty weak, and I think they approached Brian about working on it anyway. So the tech team, which involved himself, a couple of the principals, a couple of teachers, and some of the IT staff, all sat down regularly and worked on this, so they had spent a good bit of time going through it. The only thing that would be somewhat different from a structural standpoint is, they added the stakeholder responsibilities. There's a full table that involves school board, superintendent, administrators, et cetera. That's really the largest change overall from the existing SBA model policy. His, let me see if I can quickly summarize what they were talking about and why they decided to do this. So a lot of this stuff is what we kind of expect to see, they'd be in handbooks, going out to the parents every year. The team felt that everything in here was important enough, that they were hoping that the board would be willing to consider putting in policies, so it was in one central location, so that it's constantly followed back to as a reference. So their hope was that it would be included in policy just for that fact, that it's not gonna get lost between years, and say the mainstream middle school handbook going out to parents. So that's really why this is in here, there's nothing that is a problem. I was surprised, the one thing that did throw me off about the table was they had community members listed, the very last stakeholder group. And that one kinda surprised me, because it felt like that was a bit of an overreach for the board to be writing a policy that's gonna influence random community members. But Mike did have a good justification for that, and I didn't realize it, not having a student in any of these buildings in Montpelier yet, how often community members do use the networks here? Between, he mentioned a lot the flexible pathways program, and how students are interacting more with community members here and there, and that people will come specifically for accessing the Wi-Fi network. So in my mind, it kinda changed the rationale for having that in there, instead of us randomly making policy that we want the rest of the community to follow, it's, the community is coming to us and using this resource, so they should be, right, they should be aware of some of the things that they should be paying attention to. So you have to be an overall, the theme, everything was very similar with SBA. They updated us with a tech terms, the SBA model policy was not in alignment with what's actually happening on the ground in these buildings with tech itself. The only thing, Mike and I did talk about it a little bit, that caught my attention that I did want to raise to the board, was point five in the procedures. They have presented us a statement that reads, "A process whereby authorized persons may obtain specific permissions in order to access online resources necessary for educational purposes." The, the SBA policy has that worded a little bit differently. They presented a process whereby authorized persons may temporarily disable the district's internet filtering measures during use by adult to enable access for bona fide research or other lawful purpose. So there were two theme changes that the tech team presented. First, again, was just a tech update. The SBA's internet filtering measures for Google, that that's just not up to date with how things are done and stuff like that. So they updated the, the work, the language there to be more consistent with what's actually happening. But then, changing the end from the research or other lawful purpose to educational purposes. When I had read the SBA language, I had really felt like they were talking about outside individuals coming in for whatever reason. I'd use the example of maybe like a researcher at UVM coming in to do research on maybe what high school seniors are accessing for their research project or something, as an example. And Mike's interpretation was, what they presented to us, was it's specifically focused on, it would be MRF staff, so it's gonna be teachers in the building, being able to change some of the permissions to access different things, specifically for a classroom, like a teacher or a staff person making those changes. It has nothing at all to do with any outside individuals coming in. So all the changes they presented, like I said, I, I would sign off, everything they presented to us is good work, good improvements from the existing policies. It's just that change in five, that I'm not totally sure the, the intent is the same across the two.
Well, if five says obtain specific permissions, which I don't remember you reading from the other policy, and that implies to me there's some process by which, if I want to override your rules, I, I might be able to do it, but I need to get permission, and I'm assuming that in the procedure, there would be some way that I would get permission. You know, you, I'm thinking of, you might make a regulation in elementary school of some specific word you're putting up that you can't search, and then somebody wants to do some research, and that prevents them from doing the research they need to do.
So like the example he would use would be YouTube. So I think YouTube must be blocked by a filter program in most of the classrooms, but if a teacher needs to show a YouTube video for an educational classroom experience, that individual teacher can get access from the IT team to use YouTube in her classroom computers or whatever during the day for that one time.
Right.
So it is giving one specific person permission to do one specific thing.
Steve had a question.
Yeah. Steve?
Couple thoughts, why not, Ryan, the other thing on that procedure's five, was the dropping of the word temporary, and I guess the word specific may cover that, but I think the word temporary is kind of an interesting one when we start giving permissions, and I think I would be more comfortable if the word temporary was back in there. Just the idea that whatever permission we give, it's gonna also specify the date at which it expires. The other thing is, I had originally read that as, as sort of like the, the internet service provider, or Google, or whomever might, they're, they being the persons, or whatever the word is, but now I see in, in procedures two, there's also a provision for that, and it's kind of an interesting reference here, and I don't really understand it, and it might be because I didn't read this thoroughly, but provisions, so provisions necessary to ensure the internet service providers and other contractors comply with, with emphasis applicable restrictions on the collection and disclosure of student data and other confidential information. What are the applicable restrictions?
That if they can, if they encounter any student data, they're certainly not privy to do anything with it, but continue to move along. If they're, if in the course of our acts, giving access to Wild Branch as they upgrade our servers, they encounter student data, they have to treat it as hands-off. I mean, that's, they, they would not be able to take said data and do anything with it except take it from server A and move it over to server B.
And that's what applicable restrictions means?
I, I think applicable restrictions is the pupil privacy rights policy.
Okay. So then I guess I wonder, what is our policy on the sharing of student information with Google?
That's the pupil privacy rights.
It is.
Okay, great.
Number six.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing is, the stakeholder responsibilities that Ryan drew attention to, although I totally understand why a committee might want this thing codified forever and ever and ever and ever in, in school policy, I'm still not quite sure that it belongs there. And, you know, I hate for any good work to be lost in the, to the bookshelf, but it also does, you know, I don't know, I'm just kinda seeing as weird, too, that's all.
And I think, if I could, we'll forward Mike, but again, I think their hope was that we would be able to, by including some of this language in policy, set a goal or a vision for the district in terms of striving to reach these things. So again, it really was, I get it, I mean, I asked him that specifically, it didn't feel like this felt, it's fit in policy perfectly, but that was what that tech team had put forward, is mostly just trying to, again, make sure some of this stuff doesn't get lost, but also to be able to create something that essentially is a striving for, a goal to be attained.
That's, that might be the way to-
I would add to that as well, and I think it, you know, I, I would encourage the board, after this good work on policy, that you set up a process by which you review what you have on the books, and at some point, you may get to a place where you say, "This was great at its inception, and we needed this stakeholder responsibility chart, and now we feel like we don't anymore." But I, I would agree, I think, I think it's something, since it's not the boilerplate that we typically use, I think it gives a little room to, to reach forward and to grow.
And I like the way that was stated about, that it's an aspirational thing, or, and maybe that's all I needed to kind of get, understand why it needs to be in here, and perhaps that could just be added, a little line about, it's not, you know, this isn't stakeholder law, this is stakeholder, what you call strive, you know-
Aspirations?
Expectations?
Yeah, it's almost, it's expectations, right?
Sure.
Or, it really is, it's what we all expect from folks, but it, for some of these groups, because they are a little more, partway into our auspice, it's more aspirational, but I, expectations is probably reasonable, but some kind of reason why it's in there, just along with the heading, that'd be all it is.
Do others agree with that change of responsibilities to expectations?
Or me?
I'm fine with it. Or have a different suggestion?
I'm fine.
I think it's fine, unless Ryan had a better adjective to-
Okay. This is a much more minor point, but most of our policies say Montpelier-Roxbury Public Schools.
Done.
And I don't think we need here and after, because I hate that word.
And then also the, we talked about this last time, the, the mission being left off because technically we don't have a mission yet.
Got it.
Just leaving it as the actual mission.
Yep, period, got it.
So, so what was discussed last time? So it's just gonna end at educational mission?
So it's gonna end at educational mission, period.
Got it.
Yep.
Until such time as we have.
But below, they've got, they've written educational mission at the bottom of that page.
That's why.
Right, so we'd be removing the italics. And would we, would we be removing the heading of educational mission, too?
Does that make sense?
I think it does, because-
Yeah, that's what I was-
Yeah, because then we have purpose, policy, procedure. That's just the policy.
Brilliant.
Yeah.
So, I was just thinking, in the legislature, there's this process at the end of the session by which there's a, there's a review process where every piece of junk law that got passed goes into a, into a group, it's, I think it's under, it might be under judiciary, it used to be under lodge council, and it basically gets reviewed for consistency and formatting and renumbering, and making sure everything fits into the statutes and looks consistent.
Wouldn't that be great, if we did that with the district policies?
I don't know, and, and that's, they, they're, anything that's even remotely substantial, they don't-
They hired Jessica to do that in lodge council.
Yeah.
And so we'd have to-
But several people look at it. It's not just one.
Yeah.
They have to kind of, everybody has to pore over the stuff they, and make sure it all works, and that there's no one's messing with it, you know?
I don't know if we have authority, I don't know if we can actually say, it would just be changed without the board voting, but it would be a very simple process to just have them all come back at one meeting with the little red lines, and we en masse just say, now we're revising them all, so they all say-
And here's our style guide we use?
They all say Montpelier Public Schools, and they all say what muster where.
They're in the same font.
They're in the same, they're in the same font.
Maybe nine months from now, we need to go do that, right?
Yeah.
When we're done with everything.
Right. That's a great idea.
Okay. On my calendar.
Yeah, Steve, you want to work on the style guide?
Mike?
I mean, the, the, you know, one of the frustrations, I will just add, is that the VSPA model policies do not follow any style guides, so we're, we're working with wrong material that's not-
Exceedingly different.
That's not consistent.
But Heather puts them all into the right style and font consistently. Once they're adopted, they're in the right style and font.
Right.
Hmm.
Is this ready for adoption with the changes that we just spoke of?
I'm good.
I'm good.
You're good?
Be happy with that.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan, for doing the follow-up on that. That was very helpful. All right. Firearms is on a third reading, so we're not proposing to adopt this tonight.
I have something on that.
You bet. Go for it.
Um, in the first paragraph, first sentence is, the last two words are at school. So does that imply that it's also on school grounds? So at school is like in this building, or, yeah?
It's in this definitions, firearms school are defined consistent with the definitions required by state federal law.
Okay, so I don't know what the state federal law is. So is that on school ground?
I feel like we talked about that when we were at Roxbury.
We did last time, but what did these- Like a shooting club or whatever.
Well, that was a diff, that's another question. I think we talked about the school-
Truck rack in the rack of the pickup, it's all covered by statute.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
We tried to mess with it. Any school-sponsored event?
The club issue is a different question, which I'm not sure we have an answer tonight.
Do you not have an answer to that?
Whether recreational activities can function consistent with this policy. I guess what I'd suggest is that we put it on for possible adoption next time, but contingent, you know, and if we have an answer that people are happy with, we'll adopt it. If we don't, we won't.
Okay.
Is that good? Okay.
Okay.
We talked a lot about changing these-
We can't, but we decided we can't.
But we decided we can't?
Oh, we can't, those are in the statute.
Those are in the statute.
Yeah.
That just confirmed my memory.
Yep.
It doesn't have that title we were talking about either, the Montpelier-Roxbury, did you want to?
We're going to, it says public, Montpelier-Roxbury Public School. Yeah. Okay. And look, oh, man, we're on time and everything.
Oh, Bridgette, go.
Number nine?
On agenda item.
Oh, I missed it. I was, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Okay. Why don't we do that now? Steve has added an agenda item?
Okay, uh, my intention is to, to perhaps make a motion, but I wanted to have a quick discussion about it. I was approached by Sarah Kieran, one of the members of the committee, is that her last name?
McCarron.
McCarron, yeah, okay. And she, uh, and just said that, you know, they've been talking about this weird timing where June is the time everything's going to happen, but the new facilities person doesn't start till July one. And what they're, what they're feeling is that there's going to be a discontinuity in this, and they would like to see if we might be able to support bringing Andrew, the new facilities person, in for a very short, very limited sort of engagement to be part of the review and selection process of the contractors. She said that she had talked to you, Brian, and that, I don't know if you advised against it or just didn't, I don't know what. So she, I, I didn't get the details, so I want to make sure-
I've had any conversations with Sarah about this.
None, okay.
None, zero. I'd be happy to.
Right, exactly. So she just said she knew that we were going to be in a position where we had to make, where this is going to move fast and it's going to fall in our laps very quickly, and so she was hoping that we would authorize some sort of an expenditure. Jay, who's, I don't know what his exact title is, but playground guy.
Project manager?
He's, he's talked it over with the committee, with Andrew. It seems like it's a really easy arrangement to make. The idea would be that Andrew would come in, he'd have a seat at the table while they're reviewing bids, bids, reaching a decision on which contractor to choose, assisting with the negotiations over the contract to get the numbers right, and then that would be it. And so that, not that he would be making decisions, but he would be sitting in the group that did, and help with that. They thought that, they thought something like, if we set a maximum of twenty hours at, the number they came up with fifty dollars an hour would be ample, and that that would be a, like a thousand dollar expenditure, and that that kind of thing would really kind of bridge it and make sure that the new person knew everything going in and was part of it. I don't know how to proceed at this point. I think I'd like to make sure something like this happens, it doesn't have to be precisely that, but that somehow we, we authorize that we can get Andrew on here before his actual contract starts, maybe as a consultant for this, if he's up for it, which I think he is. Anyone have any thoughts? Brian, you first maybe?
You could advise or authorize me to pay-
Just make it happen.
Andrew LaRosa up to a not exceed amount of X for work to be done to ensure a smooth transition specifically around informing decisions about the playground contracts.
Could, could you trade days? In other words, could he, could you say, we'd like him to work three day, three days worth in June for three days off sometime during the year?
I wouldn't do that, because that'll mess with his, this is pre-fiscal year work.
Yeah.
I think if you-
It's just a separate type of relationship, contractual-
Right, I will just, yeah, and it has nothing to do with his perdeem at that point.
Yeah, it'll be on a ten ninety-nine or whatever, and it's going to be a whole different thing.
Is it an MPS decision then, or not?
Yes.
Oh!
Oh, shoot, I should-
As a matter of fact, it is.
Oh, man, totally is.
Of course.
Yeah, but we're not even-
All right, I think, I think it's clearly within the superintendent's discretion, given the math.
I can make this happen. I can make this.
Okay.
This can, this can get done.
Thanks. Great. Okay. Awesome.
Good job, Lisa.
Good job, Lisa.
I'm, I'm just sitting here listening to all this, like, I don't even need to think about this.
And then you lose the smoke.
It appears that everyone, I don't know if they're all in goots on this, but they all have, at least at some level, discussed it and feel like it's a very workable arrangement, including Andrew and Jay.
Okay.